In Osama City, you're watching One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. Serving you with information, news, sports, and public affairs. One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. Serving you with love. Ang Telebisyon Pangmasa. One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. One TV Special Report.
There are twelve members present, including the Honorable Presiding Officer.
Having twelve members present, the Chair declares a quorum. Once again, good afternoon. And before we proceed, let me just remind you that the last session, we have agreed that we have to hear the... The... Sanay? Aniba?
IP atay.
IP. In the observance of IP mark this month. So, salamat kayo for heading to that announcement. May I request then the Honorable Majority Floor Leader for the order business.
Yes, Honorable Chair, good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. We have no visitors availing of the people's hour, Honorable Chair. We now proceed to item number five. Apoval ang agenda of the day. There are about seven written presentations for order business, Honorable Chair. And may start in meeting them. First, the request from City Mayor to concord and adopt OPOC Resolution Number 25, Series 25 Resolution approving the nomination of members of the People's Law Enforcement Board of Osami City during the joint regular council meeting of the Osami City Superior Council, Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and Disaster Risk Reduction Management Council on October 7th at 9:30 o'clock in the morning since Osami City. The second written request is for us to adopt and concord the OPOC Resolution Number 25, HNGF-POC-006, Series 25 of the Osami City Superior Council Resolution confirming HSP Order Number 25, HNGF-019, Providing for the Creation of the Ad hoc City Screening Committee for the Philippine National Police Attrition Cota Recruitment Program of City of Osami's Composition and Functions during the joint regular council meeting of the Osami City Superior Order Council, Osami City Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and Osami City Disaster Risk Reduction Management Council held on October 7th, 25th at the Osami City Station Hall, City Building, Osami City. The third written request is for us to adopt and concord the OPOC Resolution Number 25, HNGF-POC-075, Series 25 of City Superior Council or the resolution recommending the approval of the request for 24 hours operation of 8138-813 Cafe. Joliveo Osami Social and RMCC Group Companies are in Cipitong during the joint regular council meeting of the Osami City Superior Council, Osami City Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and Osami City Disaster Risk Reduction Management Council held on October 7th, 25th at 9:30 o'clock in the morning. The fourth written request is for us to approve or enact a resolution approving the release of paid sharing of professional fees to qualified employees of East Imla Hospital. The fifth written request is for us to pass a resolution approving the series of lectures and implementation of Civil Service Commission, DOH, DOL, Joint Memorial Security Number IS-220 on November 5th, 25th, November 12th, 25th, and December 1st, 25th by the Philippine Sports Authority in coordination with Mayor Hilario Ramiro Medical Center. The sixth request is for us to enact a resolution approving the college admission test of Central Mindanao University on November 23rd, 25th. The last part of the list, written request for initiation is for us to pass a resolution approving the conduct of a tax compliance verification drive on 11th and 12th of November, 25th by the Bureau of Internal Revenue. These are the seven written requests for inclusion of our order business, Honorable Chair. I would like to motion to approve our agenda for today with seven inclusions as enumerated, Honorable Chair.
Move with the Honorable Majority Floor Leader for the approval of our agenda for today with seven inclusions as being presented. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. There are no minutes attached to our agenda for today's resolution. We proceed to item number seven, first reading of special business. Let us see. This is the request for first reading. Number one, 25 annual budget of barangay maningkol in amount of 10 million 385,000 989 pesos during endorse by our city budget officer for our apoval. And I yield to Chairman of Committee on Public Affairs, Honorable Giancarlo Morello, to introduce and give an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Giancarlo Morello, you are now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Majority Floor. Thank you, Madam Chair. Would like to pass 2025 annual budget of barangay maningkol in amount of 10 million 385,989 for first reading with reservations.
Move for first reading with reservations. Motion approved.
Madam Chair, considering the necessity of the 2025 annual budget of barangay maningkol, would like to pass for second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, Honorable Morello, is passing this on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks? Hearing, then motion approved. The second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Little D of item number seven, messages and communications. Number one, later dated October 16th, 2025, our city accountant informing that the control of approved process request will be up to November 15th, 2025, and all unpaid bills, posters, covering goals and services, payrolls, and the responses be submitted that later than January 5th, 2026. Honorable Chair, this letter of our city accountant is significant, but in the meantime, I recommend that this should be just be duly noted in the record city council, Honorable Chair.
On item number one, messages and communications presented by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader, that this be just duly noted.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Number two, notice of hearing, electronic hearing on November 30th, 25th, at 10:00 AM from the National Health Research Board regarding the NWRB case number 25-168 and NWRB case number 25-169. It's army notices of the electronic hearing heard by the NWRB on applications, Honorable Chair. For our purposes, I recommend that this communication, this notice be just be duly to the record city council, Honorable Chair.
Item number two, messages and communications presented by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader, that this be just duly noted.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Items three and four are various financial statements and statement request flows of our general fund and as well as of our trust fund. And these various statements are available in the office of the Secretary of the Secretariat of the Union and may be given upon demand of any members of the society, Honorable Chair. In the meantime, I move that this statements financial records be just duly to the record city council, Honorable Chair.
For this various financial report presented by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader, that this be just duly noted.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. There are no committee reports submitted, and item number eight. We now proceed to item number nine. Little C, an assigned business whereby we have about seven appointments, Honorable Chair. I may start with the first. A request for us to concord and adopt OPOC Resolution Number 25, HNGF-POC-075, Series 25 of City Superior Council Resolution approving the nomination of members of People's Law Enforcement Board or play of Osami City during joint regular council meeting of the Osami City Superior Council, Osami City Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and Osami City Disaster Risk Reduction Management Council. Honorable Chair, I move for concurrence and adoption of this resolution for approval on the first reading with reservations, Honorable Chair.
The Majority Floor Leader moved that this OPOC resolution be passed on the first reading with reservations. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. This People's Law Enforcement Board as constituted by the Superior Council are composed of the following: Chairman Atulne Masan Sita Payang, Chairman of Committee on Police, Police Business, and Justice, Justice Services Members, Honorable Giancarlo Morello, President DiGala Mambangay, Margaret C. Doctor, Kalipewimin Assistant of Osami City, Pastor Jopan Ilprayo, Faith Base Community, Atulne Buin Kasanda Libertario, Acting City Legal Officer. Honorable Chair, I now move on that motion to approve the adoption and concurrence of this resolution for approval and second and final reading weaving the internal rules, Honorable Chair.
Move with the Honorable Majority Floor Leader to pass this resolution on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. This resolution approving the nomination of the members of the People's Law Enforcement Board or the play of Osami City during the joint regular council meeting of the Osami City Peace and Order Council or the OPOC Osami City Anti-Drug Abuse Council or the KADAC of Osami City Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council held on October 27th, 2025 at 9:30 AM at the Asenso Osami Session Hall, Senator Jose Osami's Memorial Building, Osami City. Move for it adoption on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks? Hearing, then motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appointment number two for our concurrence and adoption, the OPOC Resolution Number 25, Series 25 of City Superior Council Resolution confirming HSP Order Number 25, HNGF-019, Providing for the Creation of the Ad hoc City Screening Committee for the Philippine National Police Attrition Cota Recruitment Program of City of Osami's Composition and Functions during the joint regular council meeting of the Osami City OPOC, the KADAC, and the RMC on October 7th, 25th. Honorable Chair, I move for adoption and concurrence on the first reading with reservations, Honorable Chair.
Move with the Honorable Majority Floor Leader this first endorsement of the OPOC Resolution Number 25. For first reading with reservations. Motion approved.
The HSP Order was uh... carried out the approval of the HSP Order of City Mayor and uh... mandates the following as members of the Ad hoc Committee of the Philippine National Police Attrition Cota Recruitment Program of City of Osami's Chairperson, Honorable Sam Norman Jipintis, Local Chief Executive, Members, Mr. Edger G. Bidra, City Local Government Administration Officer, DRJ, Honorable Masian Sita Payang, City Councilor, Superior Council Member, Emissary of City, Malasang, Indio Representative, Olly of Tribe, HSP Director, Police Skinner, Habey Isabino Sa, Pimbo, Osami's City Chief Police Emissary, Ruthisa, Grace, Iwano, City Ambassador. Honorable Chair, I move to concord and adopt this OPOC Resolution for approval on the first, second reading, second and final reading weaving the internal rules, Honorable Chair.
Move with the Honorable Majority Leader to concord and adapt this OPOC Resolution Number 25. Uh, to concord and approve this resolution. A resolution confirming Executive Order Number 25 providing for the creation of the Ad hoc City Screening Committee for the Philippine National Police Attrition Cota Recruitment Program of the City of Osami'sIts Composition and Functions during the joint regular council meeting of the Osami City Peace and Order Council or the OPOC Osami City Anti-Drug Abuse Council and Osami City Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council held on October 27th, 2025, 9:30 AM at the Asenso Osami Session Hall, Senator Jose Osami's Memorial Building, Osami City. Move with the Honorable Majority Floor Leader to pass, to confirm this on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appointment number three for our concurrence and adoption, OPOC Resolution Number 25, HNGF-POC-075, Series 25 of City Superior Council or the resolution recommending the approval of the request for 24 hours operation of 813 Cafe. Joliveo Osami Social and RMCC Group Companies, RMCP Patrol during the joint regular council meeting of the POC, the KADAC, and the RMC. Honorable Chair, I move to approve this adoption and concurrence for approval on the first reading with reservations, Honorable Chair.
Move with the Honorable Majority Floor Leader for concurrence and adoption of this um... OPOC Resolution Number 25. Series of 2025 of City Peace and Order Council. This resolution recommending the approval of the request for 24 hours operation of 813 Cafe, Joliveo, Osami's Resort and RMCC Group Companies, RM Patrol, Patrol during the joint regular council meeting of the Osami City Peace and Order Council, Osami City Anti-Drug Abuse Council or the KADAC and Osami City Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council held on October 27th, 2025, 9:30 AM at the Asenso Osami Session Hall, Senator Jose F. Osami's Memorial Building, Osami City. Move with the Honorable Majority Floor Leader, that this be adapted and concord.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. This uh, request for approval of 24 hours by the three entities was deliberated exclusively by the joint council meeting. The request of the 813 Cafe, the Joliveo, Osami Social, and RMCC Group Companies. There were no objections posed by the PNP, SIS, uh, police and the other law enforcers. And uh... There was no objection on these applications. And therefore, I move on that motion to concord and adopt this OPOC Resolution Number 25- HNGF-POC-075 for approval on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules, Honorable Chair.
Move for its approval on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks? Hearing, then motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appointment number four are a session approving the release of paid sharing of professional fees to qualified employees of East Imla Hospital and I yield to the co-chairman of the Committee on Public Health Administration, Honorable Loli Pintis, please to introduce and give an action on this item. Number four, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Loli Pintis, please is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair and to our Majority Floor Leader. I move to pass a resolution approving the release of field health sharing of professional fees to qualified employees of East Imla Hospital for first reading with reservation, Madam Chair.
Move for first reading with reservation. Motion approved.
Uh, due to the need of this resolution, I hereby move for second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, Honorable Sipris is passing this on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. This resolution approving the release of field health sharing of professional fees to qualified employees of East Imla Hospital. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appointment number five are a session approving the series of lectures in implementation of Civil Service Commission DOH, the DOL, Joint Memorial Security Number one, Series 2020 on November 5th, 25th, November 12th, 25th, and December 1st, 25th by the Philippine Sports Authority in coordination with Mayor Hilario Ramiro, Senior Medical Center. I now yield to Chairman of Committee on Civil Service, Honorable Loli Pintis, please to introduce and give an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Sipris is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I move to pass a resolution approving the series of lectures in implementation of CSC, DOH, DOLI, Joint Memorandum Circular Number One Series of 2020 on November 5th, 2025, November 12th, 2025, and December 1st, 2025 by the Phil Health Philippine Ports Authority in coordination with Mayor Hilario A. Romero Senior Medical Center for first reading, Madam Chair, with reservation.
Move for first reading with reservations. Motion approved.
Due to the need of this resolution, I hereby move for second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, Honorable Sipris is passing this on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks? Hearing, then motion approved on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appointment number six are a session approving the college admission test of Central Mindanao University on 23 November, 25th and I yield to Chairman of Committee Education, Honorable Cecil Yucot, to introduce and give an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Cecil Yucot is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. I move to pass a resolution approving the college admission test of Central Mindanao University on November 23rd, 2025 here in Osami City for first reading with reservations.
Move for first reading with reservations. Motion approved.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. In the pursuit of quality college education, I move to pass this resolution in its second and final reading weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, Honorable Cecil Yucot is passing this resolution approving the college admission test of Central Mindanao University on November 23rd, 2025. Move for its uh, approval on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks? Hearing, then motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appointment number seven are a session approving the conduct of a tax compliance verification drive of the, on the 11th and 12th, on November 25th by the Bureau of Internal Revenue. I again yield to Chairman of Committee on Trade Commerce and Industry, Honorable Cecil Yucot, to introduce and give an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Cecil Yucot is now recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Majority Floor Leader. I move to pass a resolution approving the conduct of a tax compliance verification drive on the 11th and 12th of November 2025 by the Bureau of Internal Revenue for first reading with reservations.
Move for first reading with reservations. Motion approved.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Due to the importance of this tax information drive, I move to pass in its second and final reading a resolution approving the conduct of tax compliance verification drive on November 11th and 12th by the BIR uh, for with weaving the internal rules, Madam Chair.
Due to the urgency and importance of this request resolution, Honorable Yucot is passing this resolution approving the conduct of a tax compliance verification drive on the 11th and 12th of November 2025 by the Bureau of Internal Revenue. Move for its approval on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks? Hearing, then motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. There is a uh, an urgent written request by our City Mayor to insert this in our agenda today. This will be number eight, if approved. A request to approve our Sumantara Investment Plan for Special Account for calendar year 25 in amount of 14 million 56,000 979 pesos. And approval of the programs, plans, and activities of this special account for the calendar year 25 in amount in the same amount of 14 million 56,000 979 pesos. I move for insertion uh, in our agenda, suspending the rules, Honorable Chair.
Move for the insertion of this particular request from the Honorable City Mayor. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. With the approval of the, this account, this item, I move on that motion to approve the ISIP Special Account number one uh, no, not the number. Special Account for the amount of 14 million 56,000 979 as well as the PPS programs, plans, and activities for the same amount for approval on the the first reading with reservations, Honorable Chair.
Move for the approval of the PPS 2025 for first reading with reservations.
Due to the urgency of this request and the exchange of public service and to dispose some fiscal management, I move this motion to approve this ISIP on the basis with the PPS in amount of 14 million 56,000 979 pesos for approval on the second and final reading weaving the internal rules, Honorable Chair.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, Honorable Majority Floor Leader is passing this on the second and final reading weaving the internal rule for its approval. Any comment? Remarks? Hearing, then motion approved.
This written request of the City Mayor, Honorable Chair, also with it the request to hold a special session uh, to approve our Sumantara by the number one Special Account. So, I recommend that our special session will be held tomorrow October 29th at 1:30 o'clock in the afternoon. Unless there are any objections from my colleagues, Honorable Chair, as requested by the City Mayor. Tomorrow we'll have a special session at 1:30 o'clock in the afternoon to tackle this ISIP number one, which is Special Account, Honorable Chair.
So, there will be a special session tomorrow?
Tomorrow, 1:30 o'clock.
At 1:30, okay. I note it by the Chair, the request.
Let all members be be informed on open session, Honorable Chair, of this special session tomorrow. Thank you, Honorable Chair. We now proceed to item number ten. There are no pending matters on my table. Hence, as juror, may we have the special reference? members to hear on special matters from Honorable Catherine Lemmy, so we ask Honorable De Siso, if there are any matters on PCL on her table, Honorable Chair.
For PCL matters, may we hear from Honorable Swisso.
Yes, uh, Mister Chair and, uh, Madam Chair and our Honorable Majority Floor Leader. For PCL matters, we actually had the, uh, processing of our upcoming year-end, uh, uh, meeting at Lapu Lapo City, Cebu, and we will be processing that after we already have the approval of the mayor. And the purpose of having it earlier process is for us to have a very good accommodation of the hotel. And probably if the, uh, travel authority will be out, we will be, uh, having the signatures of the counselors who will be attending the, uh, December, uh, year-end, uh, meeting or conference at Lapu Lapo City.
December.
December one to five, Madam Chair.
Cebu.
Lapu Lapo City, Cebu.
Lapu Lapo, okay.
Thank you very much.
I hope everybody will go also. Thank you. Noted by the Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. May also the PCL members to hear on ski matters, Honorable Jean-Pierre De Siso, Honorable Chair.
For ski matters, yes, Honorable, Duvalongso is now recognized by the Chair.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair and Majority Floor Leader. For ski matters, I would like to inform that earlier this morning, um, the SK, seventeen SK chairpersons of Usami City, um, dunamigipigayon nga post evaluation of the SK pre-audit with regards sa atuan transaction. So seventeen barangays kaganina, Madam Chair, ang atuan ang ipang-evaluate para ma-assist sangilahan transaction, because as we all know, um, the SK, um, kining siparet na ang budget. And with, with regards about that, Madam Chair, I would like to extend our thanks to our, uh, City Mayor, Terny Sumner Manji Fuentes, of course, the City Legal and the Accounting Office, and the COA, who helped us in the evaluation of the, um, the transaction, the pre-audit evaluation, Madam Chair. And of course, the Liga ng mga barangay headed by Cons Carlo Morale Yun, for the active ang mga kapitan, especially for those SK, former SK chairpersons and former SK treasurer, nga ay mga obligations sa ilahang tagsa-tagsa kamga transaction, up to now, wala pa na liquidate. And with that, nakakapasa lamat kay nitong harapon sila kaganina para ma-assist kung saikulang sila ang transaction. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, noted by the Chair, your report.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. May now the PCL members to hear on ABC matters, Honorable Jean-Pierre De Siso, Honorable Chair.
For ABC matters, Honorable Morale Yun is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for ABC matters, uh, this coming Thursday, uh, October thirty, we have a Liga meeting, and the agenda is, um, road clearing updates, uh, dingi updates, and, uh, other matters na dayan, Madam Chair, uh, mga problema sa mga barangay nga ay sulbado. Thank you.
We know that be, kaso to?
Thursday, October thirty.
October thirteen, okay, thank you. Asama ng video, linira?
Um, barangay Agwada, Madam Chair, or the Risa Executive Building.
Uh, Agwada, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So thank you for your information, Honorable Morale Yun, noted by the Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. At this point in time, may we now the PCL members to hear on matters concerning the indigenous people, Honorable De Siso, Honorable Chair.
For matters concerning the indigenous people, may we hear from Honorable Swisso.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, yesterday, October twenty-seven, we celebrated the indigenous, the National Indigenous Peoples' Month or IP Month at barangay Ginggola, Usami City. Uh, this also coincides with the twenty-eighth anniversary of the Indigenous Peoples' Rights Act or the April Law of nineteen ninety-seven. This year's theme of the National IP Month is weaving culture, enriching future, and empowering indigenous communities as bedrock of sustainable development. And the said activity was attended by the five ancestral, uh, tripten leaders of the five ancestral A.D. barangays, including the, uh, six, uh, IPMR representatives of, uh, the barangays in our city of Usami's. It's a whole-day affair, Madam Chair, where they celebrated and focuses on the indigenous cultural communities, including the social, the, the traditional and ancestral Subanon, uh, games, dances, and songs, uh, Madam Chair. So, uh, yesterday, uh, was, uh, was a colorful celebration, and, uh, we thank also our, uh, fellow counselors for their cooperation, support, especially wearing the Subanon. Yeah, this is our way of, uh, uh, recognizing and sharing with them how important IP rights as well as the protection and preservation of the Subanon culture. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Swisso, for your report. Noted by the Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Before I proceed to the last item, number fifteen, I now yield to my colleagues, who any other important announcement, openly but unmaterial nature, Honorable Chair.
Any other information, any other matters to be taken up?
I guess there is none. I therefore move this motion to adjourn the regular session, Honorable Chair.
Session is adjourned.